Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for being here for the first regular meeting. No, I can't, I can't. I'm supposed to eat nothing but vegetables.
Well, these are strawberry.
Yeah. Are we on? Yeah. Yeah. You tried something new? Great. No wonder it's not working. We really don't have to record it.
Where's all of our department heads?
Well, one of them is out at the airport. He'll be here late. I was here.
And that's just a simple.
That's a Kansas truck.
Oh. No, no, I have.
This is taking forever, Mayor, but I've got my backup on, so if you want.
All right. Taking up where I left off. Thank you for being here. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the community invocation. Please join me in honoring our national symbol. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray. At the end of King David's prayer in Psalm 139, he says, "Search me, O God, and know my heart; test me and know my anxious thoughts; see if there is any offensive way in me, and lead me in the way everlasting." Lord, we just want to thank you that you know us through and through. You know our fears, our anxieties, Lord, and yet you still listen to us, you work with us, and you allow us to serve you. And, Lord, we ask that you would lead our mayor and our council this evening in the ways that would be best to serve your will and to serve the people of our community. Guide and direct them in their deliberations and in any decisions they make. Lord, help them to feel the leading of your Spirit upon their lives. Father, continue to be with our community. Protect them. Be with all the workers within our city, the police, the firemen, all the different staff workers, helpers. Lord, be with them and their families. Strengthen them as they seek to make our community a vibrant, healthy community. Lord, we love you. Thank you for answering these prayers. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you so much. All right, I think we have, for lack of a better term, we'll call it a good faith amendment to the agenda. It's my understanding, Counselor Nebiker, that you wanted item 9D moved down to non-consent, which would make it 10H.
That is correct.
Okay. Do you intend to make a motion? Since it's a good faith amendment, are you moving?
Yes, I think a motion that we remove item 9D from consent agenda and placing it on the non-consent agenda.
All right. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I second it.
All right. The main motion was made by Counselor Nebiker to move 9D from the consent agenda to the non-consent agenda, make it 10H for those keeping score. And the second was made by Counselor Denham. Did I hear it correctly? Counselor Denham?
All right.
Is there any further discussion? Are you none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Anybody on the phone?
She sent a message and she's having phone problems, so she's trying to...
We're having recording problems, she's having phone problems. I'm starting to s...
Oh, it's working now?
Oh, it's working now? Well, our problem was resolved. All right. Motion passes. Any declarations of conflicts of interest on items that we'll be voting on tonight?
Mayor?
Yes.
I don't think we'd be under D or five or six, but I did meet with Eric Thompson last week. I did not discuss the contract coming forward to us. I just basically wanted to thank him for his service and for how, I believe, honorable he was at the last meeting, taking a lower amount than what we offered him.
Sure.
So, and then also just see if he had any other ideas for maybe another attorney that we could research and go forward to. And I'll forward that name to our city clerk attorney.
So that's, really goes under item six, you say?
I'm not sure where you'd want it, probably.
Well, it's discussion outside the open meeting.
Okay.
Any other confessions that any counselor wishes to make so that you may receive your absolution?
Mayor?
Yes.
I also was called by a citizen. They asked us a couple of questions, one about the $50,000 amount from Apex and also about the P&amp;Z planning is winning signs are out for open meetings. I have relayed that information to staff. I can discuss it now, but I'd rather have them discuss that during their timeframe, if that's okay.
Oh, sure. All right. Anything else? Going on to the good of the order, note that next week we're going to have a special meeting, one week from today, at 5:30, and that is so that we can make our current fiscal budget fit in the round hole. It's now a square peg because of grants and whatnot, so we have to make it fit in the round hole. It's an annual event, so there not to be any surprises there. All right. Going on to item eight, I'm declaring the public hearing open.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I believe you skipped over the elected officials.
Oh, okay. I thought you were talking. I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Oh, under city council, I'd just like to give the council a little update on the open forum that we talked, or I talked about at the last meeting. So I took the advice of our attorney clerk and I attended a Caldwell City Council meeting. That's a very eye-opening experience, I think, in multiple ways. And besides just that public hearing where they can comment like that, there are several cities around the state that do this, including Napa, Caldwell, Mountain Home, Idaho City. I looked at a lot of agendas, I listened to a lot of recordings online, I talked to council members, and everything I've heard so far has been positive. Sometimes the people come in, they actually even compliment staff or council during those things. Something they talk about, the one that was, I went in, it was only one person that came forward, and all they talked about was a noise issue, whether it's really something the city could talk about or probably even resolve, but the mayor did an outstanding job of acknowledging this person coming forward. I believe when that person left, they felt heard, they believed that they were understood, and I think that some things were going to try to be worked towards them. So I think that was a really positive thing for that community member, and I believe for the community. That council members I spoke to, I asked, is this kind of a burdensome or is this a valuable thing? I was told this is a very valuable thing for the council members and also for this community, because they do get to engage. Just like when I got called by a city council or a citizen while back about these two other things, they could have came themselves and spoke about that instead of coming to a council member themselves. I just keep hearing all these different things about the push forward in law and local governments is to get these public forums like that too. So I have some handouts. If you guys want them, have information or request any information, or know what I've looked into, I would gladly give that to everybody. What I'm going to ask, if it's, I don't know how we do this, to see if the city clerk attorney could get with me this before the next council meeting, I'd like to get it on the agenda as an action item to discuss that among the council and vote whether we have to change the agenda to have a open meeting timeframe. Most of them are three minutes, some are limited to 15 minutes totally, so you get five people at three minutes each, so it doesn't take a whole lot of time, and a lot of good things there. If they're repeated in person coming in all the time, the person who's in charge of the council, which would be the mayor, can stop that at that time. They can't talk about a certain department head doing right or wrong or bad, probably right, they could do that, but they can't hear the bashing people. Can't use it for a political platform. There's a lot of things in there. I made some different notes, but I would love to get that on the agenda next time to maybe vote on that. If anybody wants these afterwards, let me know.
Remember, you have to make that disclosure.
That we received this item and that we...
Can I hand that out now? Sure. You can if you want. All right, going on, the public hearing is open for the amendment and correction of development impact fee schedule for the non-residential industrial square footage.
Mayor, council?
Yes.
First question I have is, this ordinance is in your packet. I resend it to you so you can change the number, and I think we might have had a disconnect.
Is that why, excuse me, Mayor, is that why there's a mark with the...
On there is just the letter that I did to you, but there's an actual ordinance also. But I went back to my office too, because I thought I had it, and I pulled it up online, and it wasn't there online, so I went back into my files, obviously, and pulled it from there.
All right, I believe I might be in the tail end of the thing. Is that what we're going to be voting on later on? Because I did see something on in the agenda. See if I can find the page for you, but I believe it does have the ordinance in there.
Unless it's clear at the very back. I just looked at the front of it where my other literature was at.
Don't quote me. I believe that's where it was at, though.
It's out of order.
Okay.
I think it's page 30.
It did have a cross out in that, so.
Well, I'm about to start.
I just want to make sure it's there before we continue on.
It's there.
Okay. All right. So tonight I have an ordinance amendment, which is the impact fee ordinance for industrial square footage. Apparently, when this was, the ordinance was developed, there was some fat fingering of a key, and they put down in the ordinance $3.63 a square foot, and according to the study, it's supposed to be $63, or 63 cents a square foot. So I want to get that corrected. That information is in your packet to verify that. It came from the summary of the impact fee study.
Before we go to public comments, do any of you have any questions?
Mayor? Brian, has anybody had to pay that amount yet? The $3 and...
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there anyone, one from the public that would like to be heard on this issue? Is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard on the amendment and correction of development impact fee schedule for non-residential industrial square footage? One last call. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to be heard on amending the development impact fee schedule concerning the non-residential industrial fee footage? Three calls, no answers. The meeting is closed. What would you like to have happen at this time, since we have the...
I need to read the ordinance, then I need a motion to approve the amendment.
Well, maybe that's where the confusion is. So the decision of the public hearing would be to approve the correction, but the ordinance itself is later in the agenda to be passed.
Okay.
So, sorry for that confusion.
It's good.
Right. Is there a motion with regard to approving the amendment? Mayor? Yes.
I make a motion that we approve... Did we exit the... Did we exit the... Okay.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the amendment and correction of development impact fee schedule for non-residential industrial square footage.
I'll second it. All right. And as to approve it from 63 cents per square foot to $3.63 per square foot, was that the motion? By the way around?
Yes. Yes, that is correct.
Motion was made by Counselor Nebiker to approve the amending of the, to adopt the correction that will be dealt with in the ordinance later on. And the second was made by Counselor Ruzinkin. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye. She's back.
She's back? So we have six ayes, no nays, abstentions, motion passes. All right.
It'll be later.
Okay.
Going on then to the consent agenda as amended, items A, B, C, vice D, E, and F, having to do with the minutes counts payable, which were done today, approving the requests for number two, granite excavation for upper pressure zone one, the Skyhawk East final plat application, and the road closures for the county recreation district holiday parade on the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion with regard to the consent agenda. Mayor? Yes. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the revised consent agenda as presented, and will the mayor sign? Well, I don't have to sign anything. I'll sign it. Well, I'll sign stuff that has to be signed. Yeah. Thank you. And is there a second? Was there? Counselor Denham? All right. Motion was made to approve the item nine consent agenda as amended by Counselor Ruzinkin, and the second was made by Counselor Denham. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? No nays, no abstentions. Motion passes unanimously. Going on to item 10. We have two resolutions. Resolution R 2025-06 is authorizing the submission of an Idaho GEM grant application for improving the sidewalk downtown. The specific sidewalk was one that was not improved the last time. It's on commercial on the west side. It's the one that has the very clever double curb. And there are some issues there, in my opinion, for people for not walking, because there's some lips, and to improve the downtown parking. This GEM grant is, it's under $50,000, and what we can do is, as our in-kind contribution, if you recall, a couple of months ago, we got the AARP grant. Okay, that $10,000 then becomes our in-kind, and that's all. We'll obviously be doing some work down there, but we already have a contractor lined up that has given us the bid. It's under $50,000. I think the max is around, what, it was 37, something like that? Anyway, it's well within the parameters of the GEM grant thing, so it's the next best thing to free money. So that will assist us greatly in our endeavor to create a more walk-friendly and, well, walk-friendly and certainly an area revamped downtown that will want to encourage businesses to go there. And we'll have more updates as time goes along. So, does anyone have any questions with regard to that resolution?
Mayor?
Yeah.
I just, the GEM Community Economic Development Foundation, is that something that's been developed with business owners? Who incorporates that?
What do you mean?
Who's involved in that?
Oh, well, the GEM County, it's now the GEM Community Economic Development Foundation. Jim, I'm sorry, Jim, can you... That's been around for, or its predecessors have been around for, I don't know, 30 years. And right now, it is headed by Commissioner Willie, and then you're on that, you're on that ex...
On the EDF.
Yeah, EDF in your capacity as the president or the head honcho for GEM.
Well, I was, but now as the city council.
Oh, okay. So anyway, it's, it's the same suspects, and they're the ones that are honchoing this. There are county projects that will include ultimately connecting up all of the trails, and they will be connected with the city in the master plan ultimately, and then significant improvements downtown. In the future, we're going to be talking about Blazer Park and what that might be. We're also planning, and we already have the offer from one of the river guide companies, Cascade, next year, they will, I don't know how Goff, Pat Goff pulled this off, but for nominal fee, they will take a bus, they'll have one of their buses here, and they'll take them up to the, to the bridge so they can come down. There's also, we're planning things with regard to the island area on the river. We have potential for a, for a bridge that Lepsee will give us, an old bridge that we will be able to connect the island with our side. We're still soldiering through the gift from the Parks and Land Foundation. We found an individual fully over the line, so that, that issue is going to have to be resolved. But we're, for having absolutely no assets, other than $10,000 as boot for this, for the potential of an Idaho GEM grant, we're making a lot of progress. We'll, we'll also have signs put up. We're going to have signage on, on the lamp posts, you know, city hall this way and that sort of thing. And we, we plan to have at the memorial site, there's going to be a kiosk that will be placed up there, and it will be a, you can, for example, you could say, well, where are the parks? So you hit the park thing, and it shows where all the parks are and where you are in relation to the parks. So we think it's, it's going to be a real improvement to get people to come here, to visit, and then they can go home.
Yeah. Because it's kind of the tail end of, like, I remember we had the money that, where they were taking care of all the trees down there, then that dissolved, so the money went somewhere else. Is this kind of that?
Well, it's the same, kind of.
Need to be organized, sounds like.
Yeah, well, that was the downtown, that was the bid, the business improvement district. And who knows, there may be another movement to recreate that. But for now, this grant is to get us going, it's twofold. One, to demonstrate that we have the ability to go forward and get a grant, and that's why the AARP was helpful in that. And we actually had to get an extension, and they were more than happy to give us an extension, because otherwise we had to use that money by the end of this year. But they said, no, go ahead, we want to help you out, because we know that you have a lot to do down there. And quite frankly, the folks at the Idaho GEM grant want us to succeed, and so they've been kind of, kind of nurturing us on how to do it.
Now, is that a pass-through money? Does that money come to the city, then it passes through to the other things, or is it actually a city project?
Well, it's a city project, but it's our slice of what EDF is doing. So we will pay the contractor directly when it's time to, to hire the contractor, because it is, it is a city project, but under the overall umbrella of what EDF is doing in both the county and the city. Yeah.
So. There is a project that's already done to, I don't know if you recognize it, but the...
Trail?
Along the bike, or where the motor cross is, coming down in that area there. There was already a mountain bike trail that was already done by, I can't remember the one gentleman.
Well, that's Wade, but he, but he's extending that.
Yeah, he's extending it. But we're also looking at the trail that's, we're just waiting on land agreements, which is along the top of the South Slope area.
Yeah. The, it's a...
We pretty much have that one done.
Yeah. It borders what, it's on the Little Land, and they're all for it.
BLM.
But there's a BLM slice, and so we're soldiering through that. So if anyone wants to make a motion for the resolution.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a resolution, or make a motion that we approve resolution number R 2025-06, a resolution authorizing the submission of the Idaho GEM grant application to improve a section of sidewalk and parking downtown Emmet. And Mayor, assign if needed.
Second?
Second.
Motion has been made with regard to resolution number R 2025-06, a resolution authorizing the submission of an Idaho GEM grant application to improve a section of sidewalk and parking in downtown Emmet. Second was made by Counselor Ruzinkin. Mayor, assign. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? No nays, all ayes, no abstentions. Motion passes. The next one is, again, in futuro. This has to do with the, what, A 250? It's, as you know, next year, we will have the 250th celebration, 250th year celebration of the... of the Declaration of Independence, the formation of our country. And I've been told, and I haven't been able to find out otherwise, but I've been told that Emmett, at least in this century, has never had a Fourth of July parade.
Ever.
Ever, apparently. Which seems kind of strange to me.
It's going two weeks after the Cherry Festival parade.
Well, I know, but the Cherry Festival parade only goes back about 80 years. So I was thinking, you know, like, maybe in the, you know, 1901, maybe we had a, but it's not a traditional event, or it hasn't been for a long time if it was. So this is, this is how we fix that. And if we do it right, maybe it'll become an annual event. There's no reason why you can't have a parade in the middle of June, and then another parade on the Fourth of July. I mean, we could have a parade every weekend if we wanted to. Well, could, it's possible. But anyway, what this resolution does is, if it's approved, we will receive $2,500 from the commission that is sponsoring the celebration throughout the state. And our project would be to get the advertising out for that parade. The primary advertisement would be in the paper, but there are other places where we can, and I've already discussed with the nice young lady that does the ads down there. She doesn't anticipate that it will be much different next year. It would be about $1,700 for a full-page ad. And then there would be other ads, other places that we could do as well. So anyway, it's, it doesn't hurt to ask them and to put it in, so that's the resolution, and the chair will entertain a motion if there's no questions.
Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve Resolution Number R 2025-07.
All right. Seconded by Counselor Harris. All right. Main motion was made for Resolution R 2025-07, having to do with the 250th anniversary of America and our commemoration. And the second was made by Counselor Harris. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay.
Aye.
I'll take that as in favor and not a nay. And no abstentions. Motion passes unanimously.
It was a yes.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Sweeten, you are on. This is the first reading of Ordinance 2025-05.
All right, counsel, hopefully you had a chance to read my cover letter about how these franchise ordinances are supposed to work. This is a unique situation, new for us, and it may be the last one we ever do during our time here in the city.
We certainly hope so.
Any questions on my, my cover letter? So what I'm asking for tonight is just that, is what is written in my cover letter, the suggested motion, to have proposed ordinance number O 2025-05 read for the first time by title only.
And then that's it?
No, no, there's much more.
Okay.
Later.
Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion to approve ordinance O 2025-05 and be read for the first time by title only.
All right. Second? Thank you. Main motion has been made by Counselor Nebiker for the, to approve ordinance number O 2025-05 and to be read by title only. And the second was made by Counselor Butler. Is there any further questions about the motion? Hearing none. President Henderson?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Butler?
Yay.
Counselor Denham?
Yay.
Counselor Harris?
Yay.
Counselor Nebiker?
Yay.
Counselor Resinkin?
Yay.
Six yays, no nays. Motion passes unanimously.
Ordinance number O 2025-05, an ordinance of the City of Emmett, Idaho, granting to Intermountain Gas Company a 20-year extension to its franchise to construct, maintain, and operate a gas transmission and distribution system, providing for the use of streets and alleys and rules governing the same, subjecting the grantee to all powers of the city, setting forth the rules of the franchise and grant, providing for the right of inspection by the city of grantee's plans, accounts, and books, requiring grantee to furnish certain maps, setting forth the annual payment to the city and the filing of annual reports with the city, requiring grantee to indemnify city and file evidence of insurance, requiring compliance with safety regulations, setting forth an agreement not to compete, reserving power of eminent domain, providing for surrender of franchise, granting right to salvage, requiring written acceptance, providing for consent to sale, assignment or lease, providing for payment of publication cost, setting forth penalties and forfeitures, separability and repeal.
Well, that's easy for you to say.
I didn't hear that.
Sure.
Let me warm up before that.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that's the first reading. Do you want to go on with the other part?
Well, we'll do it again next time. This one has to be read three times.
All right, well, that's number one. Want to go on to item D?
Yeah.
And item D, this is an ordinance of the City of Emmett. Chief Kunkka.
Counsel, this is another ordinance that was brought up by Susan Jenkins not too long ago. And the way it was brought up at that time was specifically for the training. As you see and have been updated, that's not the only thing happening here. We also have made it so that we cannot anymore have a permit for a bartender. So that's been taken out, and then we've added the training. The training is the Approved Tips Program, which is a training of intervention procedures. And on the bottom of page one there, it states what that training must have. It approves that a bartender has a monitoring of patrons' behavior, recognizing intoxicated patrons, checking patrons' photo identification for relevant information, recognizing false and altered photo identification, providing alternatives to alcoholic beverages, and problem-solving when interacting with intoxicated and belligerent patrons. Also, understanding and applying Idaho laws and rules pertaining to alcoholic beverages. It's going to require that the bartenders slash servers will attend that training. That's what this ordinance is.
May I have a question?
Yes.
So, Chief Kunkka, so if you, instead of going to get bartender license or a regular license, you have to go get a tips certificate instead?
Yes.
And then you go turn that into you, or prove that you have taken the course?
Yes, that's correct.
Not necessarily. So in this case, the way it's written is that they have to maintain their records and then have to show it upon request.
Okay.
So if, excuse me, if I go into the tips and complete the course, let's say, and I happen to work a wedding or something, the maybe comfort and doing all that, and then I am approached by an officer, and I have to show him my card to show that I've proven that I've taken the course?
Correct.
Instead of the bartender slip?
Correct, yes.
Mayor?
Yes?
Just a few questions, chief. So, a couple things. First, when I, first I was like, oh, I don't know about this. But then I started reading, I think, a little more into this. I think what I believe, the plan is to get everybody standardized, so they're not just, because I think you can go to, somebody shouldn't sell alcohol without having any training currently. Is that correct? If you want to, I'm just going to pick out somebody, let's say La Costa, you can go to La Costa and serve as a bartender with a bartender permit from the City of Emmett.
Right, they don't need to have one anymore. Correct.
But no training?
No training either.
This doesn't require, does the bartending to require training?
Yes.
So it's going to educate more people who are going to be in that bartender service, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The only thing I wish was in there, but is okay, is I wish the establishment owner was, had some responsibility also to verify that that had also, that was the only thing I think would be a nice thing to have in there, that there was something to hold them accountable, so they don't just come in and say, oh yeah, I'm certified, and they start serving, then find out they don't, aren't certified. I do understand, I think, the philosophy behind it, to make sure everybody's trained properly before they are serving alcohol, which probably betters our chance of not overshoring the community.
Yes.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number O 2025-06, also move to dispense with the rules requiring the ordinance be read on three separate days and once in full, and the ordinance be read once by title.
All right. Second? Thank you. Main motion has been made by Counselor Nebiker to approve ordinance number O 2025-06, and in accordance with our tradition, that it be read, suspending the rule requiring that it be read on three separate days, unlike the last one, and once by title only. And the second was made by Counselor Butler. Is there any further discussion or debate on the motion? Hearing none. President Henderson?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Butler?
Yay.
Counselor Denham?
Yay.
Counselor Harris?
Yay.
Counselor Nebiker?
Yay.
Counselor Resinkin?
Yay.
Yays, no nays, no abstention. Motion passes. Chief, would you do the honor of reading the title?
Yes. An ordinance of the City of Emmett, Idaho, amending Title III, Chapter I, Section 19, Bartenders, by removing the requirement to be licensed, requiring completion of a bartender training program the earlier of either April 1st, 2026, or within 60 days of the date the bartender begins employment, requiring records to be maintained and to show proof of certification to law enforcement upon request, outlining the requirements for approved training programs, granting the Emmett Police Department authority to maintain the list of approved training programs, defining terms, and providing an effective date.
All right. Is there a motion with regard to publish the ordinance?
Mayor?
Yes?
I move to accept the first and only reading of ordinance O 2025-06, direct the mayor to sign, and direct that to be published in summary.
All right. Is there a second?
All seven.
Thank you. Main motion to accept the first and only reading of ordinance O 2025-06 was made by Counselor Denham, directing the mayor to sign, and directing that it be published by summary. And the second was made by Counselor Harris. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Mayor?
Yes?
I would do this after we kind of made motion, but have you looked into the financial loss, the cost of the city? Will there be, is there a lot of bartenders? Does that generate any revenue to the city that's of any value?
So, Wileene and I did look into that. I don't remember the number. Do you remember?
Two and 3,000.
Thank you.
Just to tail end on that, because I think I missed the meeting where this issue brought up, was brought up. State law has preempted the city's ability to license these types of professions. And as news of this came out at my Idaho Municipal Attorney's Legal Education Class, I polled the rest of the room, and us, and-
Weezer.
Weezer were the only cities that actually licensed bartenders. So that's why.
Appreciate that.
Well, may I say something? In my opinion, I think it's a good idea. Being in that type of field, it's very educational to have that background, because one false move of selling under age, I check those IDs, because I do not want anything to go wrong. But more education than nothing.
What they, when we were talking about the approved training programs, that you're going to obviously look at which ones are good and which ones are bad.
ISP.
Yeah. Are you going to use ISP ones? Because just from my experience, you know, training programs versus going to a class and doing it online, I mean, the online one, there's a couple of good ones on there, but there's some bad ones out there, too. So we really got to be sketchy on that. But to emphasize that we should use that, because there's a lot of people that have that as a second job and work, and that's their only avenue is to take that online course. Because it's helped me a lot with over there at the fairgrounds, because I required everybody to take the same class. So. I don't know, it's just something I think about.
Yeah. All right. Any other discussion? President Henderson, how do you vote?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Butler?
Yay.
Counselor Denham?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yay.
Counselor Nebiker?
Yay.
Counselor Resinkin?
Yay.
Six yays, no nays, unanimous. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next matter is the impact fee.
Now it's my turn.
Ordinance number O 2025-07.
We have ordinance 2025-07, the impact fee ordinance. Ready for the heading? An ordinance of the City of Emmett, Idaho, amending the impact fee schedule-
Wait, wait, wait. They approved the change. Now, if we're going to approve the ordinance, we should probably go through the normal procedure. I mean, if you want to read it to say, and that's what we're talking about, that's-
You usually do that for me.
Well, no, this is the, what we talked about previously with the public hearing. So are there any questions for the gentleman with the thing? For Brian.
Okay.
None? All right, is there a motion?
Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number O 2025-07, and I also move to dispense with the rule requiring ordinancees to be read on three separate days and once in full, and that the ordinance be read once by title only.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Counselor Denham has moved to dispense with the rule requiring that ordinance O 2025-07, having to do with amending the impact fee schedule, as we previously dealt with, to move, to dispense with the rule requiring that it be read on three separate days, and that be read once by title only, and that the ordinance, by title only, and that's it. And the second was made by Counselor Resinkin. Is there any further discussion? President Henderson?
Yay.
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 Counselor Butler? Counselor Denham?
Yay.
Counselor Harris?
Yay.
Counselor Nebiker?
Yay.
Counselor Resinkin?
Yay.
Yay. Six yays, no nays, unanimous. Motion passes if you do the honors.
Yes, sir. Ordinance-
Ordinance number O twenty twenty-five dash zero seven. An ordinance of the city of Emmett, Idaho, amending the impact fee schedule in subsection C of Chapter One, Title Twelve, Section Three of the Emmett City Code, Establishment of Service Areas in Position of Impact Fee, Fee Schedule Exemptions, to be in compliance with the final report titled City of Emmett, Idaho, Impact Fee Study and Capital Improvement Plans, dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, Exhibit Six dash five, and Section Seven dash five. Seven dash one, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to move and accept the first and only reading of ordinance O twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, direct the mayor to sign and direct it to be published by summary.
All right. Second. All right, thank you. Counselor Nebiker, uh, move to accept the first and only reading of ordinance O twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, directing the mayor to sign and directing it to be published by summary, and the second was made by Counsel Ruzinkin. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. President Henderson, how do you vote?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Butler?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Denham?
Yay.
Counselor Harris?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Nebiker?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Ruzinkin?
Yay.
Yay. Six yays, no nays. Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, funding request.
Council, as I mentioned last meeting, uh, you submitted a letter into your packet for us to move on to phase two of our access control upgrades, uh, in that letter is a list of the facilities that this will cover, um, and the motion that we are looking for, does anybody have any questions on any of that?
Mayor?
Yes.
So I see that this is going to come out of the capital improvement line for the Technology Department. Is that, supporting that for the, all the other departments too?
Yeah, specifically for this phase, why it's coming out of, um, general fund savings is because the Parks Department and so forth falls under general fund, so, um, just for ease of accounting purposes, we, we ask to appropriate into our budget, so that when I get those bills, um, from the equipment or the, uh, installer, that I can code those out, and I track them with my stuff, work with Lyleen on, uh, the reconciliation of that at the end of the year. Does that answer your question, or did I miss it?
No, just also, is that like already in your budget, or was that in your budget?
No, that's, that's exactly what we're asking for with the, from the savings account on the general fund side.
Will we have to open the budget to put more money in technology at some time?
Does that going to be?
We did that. Yeah. That's part of the special meeting next week.
Oh.
So we preemptively, full disclosure, because of the timeline of that, um, I asked Lyleen to put that in preemptively, assuming the council would approve it. If you did not want to approve this tonight, that is okay, uh, but that is what was put in there for the reconciliation, because we had to get that published.
If this is approved, and this money comes out of that account, and do you still have funds in there to do other capital improvements for yourself and so, through the Technology Department?
So, again, this is just for this tail end of this budget year, so we had some funds in there, we put that money initially towards some of the access control upgrades, so to directly answer your question, we have, we have expended those funds that we were initially appropriated at the beginning of the year, we had a small amount in there for those projects.
Each year, uh, each department that gives capital improvement funds, but back in their capital improvement area, is that correct?
I think that
By getting some?
I think that you're mixing those up just a little bit, the terms, and I understand why, um, the capital improvement funds that you're thinking of are what we have allocated for, you know, purchasing vehicles and so forth. That is not necessarily, it's, it's still coming out of savings account, it's just that our line item for, um, IT, when it says capital improvement, is for capital projects. So one-time projects that are higher dollar, that don't have a revolving cost to them.
So this is kind of a capital project, not capital improvement, is what it is?
Correct. It's, the line in the budget is called capital improvement line, so I understand how that might be a little bit confusing, but again, we're utilizing that line just for these one-time projects that are larger costs, but they're capital expenditure that carry over for a very long time. Any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm moving to appropriate up to thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-five to the Technology Department Capital Improvement Line from the General Fund Savings Account on Phase Two of the Access Control Plan.
All right, thank you.
Is that good?
Thank you. Counselor Butler has moved to appropriate up to thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-five to the Technical Department, Technology Department Capital Improvement Line from the General Fund Savings Account to fund Phase Two of the Access Control Plan, and the second was made by Counselor Denham. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those nay? No nays, no abstentions. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item G, Innovative Concrete Construction, Inc.
Mayor, Council, um, as I kind of talked about last week, uh, we did get a donation of fifty thousand dollars, um, for the, uh, construction of some pickleball courts on our new park there at sixteen hundred, uh, East Twelfth Street. So I'm requesting a motion to approve the, uh, construction, or the estimate of the fifty thousand, three, three hundred and seventy dollars to Innovative Concrete for Pickleball Courts of the, uh, city property located on sixteen hundred East Twelfth.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, attending the Capitol City Council meeting was very educational in multiple ways, and I'm going to ask a bunch of questions tonight based on that meeting, the things that I think I've learned a lot about, I feel I've learned a lot about. So the first one was the gentleman that contacted me individually, said, and asked me about that five, fifty thousand dollars, was that allocated just to pickleball? Could we do something in terms of what that fifty thousand, or is that what Apex said, I want this sort of pickleball courts?
So that, that is what Apex, they had asked, um, they actually donated the four acres to us, um, and I wasn't in those conversations. Um, but they said that, hey, we will help with funds on doing this, and it is what they, they asked us to do. Um, they didn't say, hey, I'm getting, this is what the money is exactly for, but it's what they asked us to do, and I, I think with them donating the fifty thousand, that we should do what they've, they've asked, yeah.
Sure. So, the meeting I attended, they had a big discussion about subdivision, and what I was talking about was infrastructure, traffic, and pretty much, uh, parks and stuff like that inside those subdivisions. The subdivision that was, they were presenting was huge in this big park, and they're making this big deal, that the developer was doing like that. So I reached out and, and, and I'm happy to probably rely on Brian for quite a bit of this too, but I believe when, when Dagger Falls was developed, they had to have open space. Open space is a certain size, Frank can elaborate more on that, if he'd see, that they required. They required that amount of property, and they gave that to the city of Emmett. So one of my questions that goes to me for Brian is probably, if we left that as a bare dirt lot, would that comply with a open space requirement by our subdivision ordinance?
Right.
If it's just, if it's just, we left it as dirt, we didn't do anything for?
No, because the intention was to build a park there, and the city would build that park.
Okay. So, we're against a lot of things, but it just made me really think a lot. This, the Apex developer provided us with four acres of land, and they said, okay, build a city park so we can comply with our open requirements per our subdivision ordinance. Oh, by the way, you need to put grass in there, and probably a parking lot, and maybe some stats, or whatever it may be, uh, I believe the city cost, and I believe it's going to be city maintenance.
Yes.
Okay. So, it really made me wonder a lot if we did the right thing, and maybe in the future, we may, I need to ask more questions, we all need to ask more questions about that thing, or are we funding open, uh, place for subdivisions when they're coming in? So I kind of felt bad myself, because I, I probably didn't, was educated enough, or didn't ask the right questions back then, to understand that, because I don't know if that's right that we're doing that, and I know we need land, and we need to prosper and grow, and I know that's a very valuable thing for us. My concern is, does it come off Twelfth Street, or do you have to actually go into subdivision to get to that?
So I will be actually adding a, right there off Twelfth Street, and putting a parking lot, that, it's about twenty cars. Um, for right now, it, it will just be a, um, gravel lot for them to park, but as we, we kind of talk about these open spaces, and I've mentioned a few times, these subdivisions, uh, doing the in lieu of, um, and instead of having the open space doing the in lieu of, which really helps out, because a lot of these parks, these open spaces that you go into these subdivisions, the HOA is supposed to take care of them, and they don't, and and so, with the couple, um, subdivisions that are going around, and the in lieu of money we will be getting, that will, you know, we will be able to use that to, um, maintain and, um, update these parks, and and as, as I get those, I will, you know, uh, I would like to, my, my thoughts are, as I build it, make it to where, hey, as soon as I get the money for it, I can just put asphalt in, and be able to pave that area, um, you know, and as I get more money, I'll be able to update with playground equipment and stuff like that.
So I guess if a citizen from outside the community is coming down, they drive it off Twelfth Street, and they see this park in a subdivision, will, will they come off of Twelfth Street, or will they go into subdivision and come around?
They will come off of Twelfth Street.
So directly off Twelfth Street, pull right into the parking area?
Yep.
Perp.
And it's going to be kind of, kind of right there be, um, the area I have slotted out, um, is going to be just kind of before the entrance, um, into Dagger Falls.
So it would look just like a city park?
Yep.
Just connect it kind of to a subdivision?
Yes.
So I guess maybe brighter, the attorney could ask me, if a city property, how does it still comply with them for open space? I, I doesn't, I don't quite understand that, if we own?
Do I get through his thing, that I can answer these questions, his request? Or is we, are we convoluted everything?
Am I asking too many questions, Chief?
No. I don't know if it's a legal issue.
So, I'm just, I guess my question, are we set up fifty thousand dollars from them to put in the pickleball court, and now we're going to have, going to pay them for a parking, and we're going to put some sets in and grass like that? Are we opening up something that maybe we don't want to do? We've already committed to land, and we've been working on that, I believe, I think they're even working on some trees and stuff like that, so we're putting our in-kind into that, in paying that, so that's why I'm asking so many questions, because it is a donation we can or cannot accept, if we don't accept it, and we can't do enough of that park, what does Apex do? They can't comply with the subdivision rules, from my understanding, but it, it would be a dirt parking lot, or dirt?
They would have had to complete the park.
Yeah, but I mean, like right now, because we own the property, correct?
Right, right, if we would not have accepted it, then they would have had to build it.
Yeah. And we accepted it.
They could have just grassed the whole thing, put some trees in, and called it, that's it.
So, I understand, and I believe Apex, I believe hopefully they're looking at this as the right way, we're trying to make something more bigger than just a grass field. But it's still going to put some requirement and some funding from us, even though other subdivisions are paying for that, so they're going somewhere else, it would be going into that subdivision, so that's why I'm asking so many questions about parking lot area, it's going to be a science and city public park, instead of somebody driving by, thinking that's a park that belongs to a subdivision, because I'm bushy on believing, or anyway, you don't drive into subdivision, hang out in the parks, probably, most people won't anyway. So I just want to make sure that we are doing the right thing, when people are driving by, they see it's a city park. I imagine staffing, and, and, uh, they can probably reserve that, I imagine, people could reserve for birthday parties like that and stuff?
At this time, just because it is, it won't have the trees and the, all the amenities, um, I won't make it reservable. Uh, maybe in the future, once we have all that stuff, yeah.
Beautiful park down there, people may want to use that, that would be on your list of the different parks they could utilize.
Yes, yeah.
So the city community will get use out of that, I'm just, I get, got struck back a little bit when I didn't think this through, I think in the beginning, you know, by, and it might be the right way to do it, maybe other communities are doing the same thing, accepting land and then putting the parks in, but I just know over there, uh, there was a a big concern that they had about all that stuff, so.
Mayor, I can share, um, so with the pickleball courts and the parking, how much left over?
Um, I, I would guess probably between three to three and a half acres. Leftover.
Leftover?
Yeah.
And it is part of our plan?
Yeah, in our, yeah, in our parks.
It is in our master parks plan, that was the biggest reasoning why we went with this, why we wanted it, because it escalated that whole area right there for a city park. City does not have funds to spend for four acres at today's prices, so we felt it was a great deal to establish a city park. We could have probably done some things different, I would think, um, maybe asked for some more in-kind from the developer, but we didn't at that point, we wanted the land, um, to establish a city park that could be utilized, because they could have put a, a subdivision park in and blocked it off to the community. We wanted something that the community could benefit from, um, to be able to enjoy it. Yes, we're doing a lot of in-kind, we have a proposed development next door with some proposed in-kind, we have two more down on Moffitt. They're interested in the in-kind development also, that will help fund this park. Um, so right off the bat, I think we can come up with hundred to two hundred thousand dollars to put into this park, to make some pretty substantial improvements.
Yeah.
How big a pickleball court, is this compared to the one we already have in the park?
It'll be the same, it's pretty much a exact same one as what is in the Highlands, so it's a two-court, uh, pickleball court.
Do you have the final, how much that one cost?
The, the one they did up? Yeah, 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 the, the bid and everything is in the, the packet, it's fifty thousand, three hundred and seventy.
I, I saw that, but I mean, is that what our?
No. No, this pickleball court, um, we were two hundred and seventy-eight, I think, is what?
We're going to have to come up with the other hundred and?
No, no, this is, this is fully built, this fifty thousand is, and three hundred and seventy dollars is fully built, that's, that's the painting of the court that is completely fully built.
That's around it, my?
Yes, yeah.
So you're two, two courts?
Yeah, it's only two courts.
Six courts. Got it. That makes it, it's the same size?
Yes.
As what we're, thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, total all this, I, I did lie right through the, the, uh, yeah, that was done there, yes, everything's in there, I mean, it's going to be a registry using like that.
Yep.
My concern was just whether other citizens would utilize that park, because it maybe look like a subdivision park, but sounds like you're going to have?
Yeah, I'm going to have parking, um, I will have signs made up, um, I actually have to think of a name for it, so if you guys have any ideas on what we can name it, that would be great. But yeah, so I, I will have all the signs up and, and, um, the parking area, and it will be eventually paved and, and all that.
Mayor? Yes.
We got to keep in mind too, that this is one of the big things that the general public, whenever doing the comprehensive plan, they wanted more parks, more places to go besides just the city park, so.
I say we name it East Park.
So I was thinking?
East Park?
East Side Park?
Because it's in the east.
Yep.
Mayor? Yes.
Just one more thing, um, so yes, the comprehensive plan does request that, I just want to make sure we don't overextend what we do, we have grass problems in the park, we have some other issues that we need to address like that too.
Right.
Manpower's not overflowing for you, I just want to make sure we're not burning our staff or community with things that?
Yeah, and, and, yeah.
Yeah, so this is twofold, you know, you know, it, help Apex, it's helping us, I understand that, but I'm just wondering, kind of me, what Brian said, maybe we could have thought of maybe asking a few more things to help with, a little more things, a parking lot, or something simple like that, to give a little more buy-in from them. It's all done, but anyway, so yeah, I think the, the bid that they provided, I looked through all of that, that's fantastic, it's going to be a plug and play in the operation, so.
Mayor? Yes. I move that we approve the Innovative Concrete Construction, Inc. estimate of fifty thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars for the construction of two pickleball courts on city property located at sixteen hundred East Twelfth Street. All right, thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Counselor Butler has moved to approve the Innovative Concrete Construction, Inc. estimate of fifty thousand, three seventy for the construction of two pickleball courts on city property located at sixteen hundred East Twelfth Street, and the second was made by Counsel Denham, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? No nays, all ayes. Motion passes unanimously. Taking up item H, which used to be nine D, approval of legacy heights number two, final plat application.
So Mayor and Council, I, I don't have any problem with this at all, I just wanted to get to the discussion. Like I said, this other meeting I attended, get, opened up a lot of different ideas and thoughts. The biggest concern, and I guess I'm following that, because Paul was basically one of the largest, kind of, facet fast growing city in the state of Idaho, and they're facing traffic issues, huge traffic, which I think we all talked about that independently and together about the traffic concerns at 12th and Substation. So, this just gives me an open because I, and it's going to also reflect down on that. This is only 14 lots and what, one bare lot or something like that, it said, and one common lot. So, so it's not a ton of a lot of people, but we're getting so much growth out there. So, I guess my focus would be, do we have any idea of anything, any talk about 12th and Substation traffic? That in the works there? My concern and what they had over there was the same thing, we're doing the development to help build and buy and develop this stoplight, but sooner or later it's going to be so overran and traffic, we're going to have huge problems, I think. So, I'm just trying to find out, is there something going in the works yet? Do you know with that stoplight?
Mm-hmm. Yes, the engineering has been started on that. It's already come to council for the, approved of the design. We're going out for a land acquisition person to buy up the right of way that's required for that stoplight. Development is paying into that stoplight. This development particularly has to pay, I think it's 12,000 something into that. That's probably the last development that will pay into that fee. The rest of them will pay impact fees. The street impact fees, which will go to the capital improvement plan that's been established in the city, that street light is one of the priorities of that capital improvement plan. So, the funds can only go to those certain items, which that's one, South Boise Avenue is one, and I'm sure there's other ones, but that's without, their impact fees. The impact fees is actually more money than what was approved, that that 12,000 dollars that they will pay, but that was approved with the preliminary plot when we approved it and that was a number that came from our engineer. And that was approved prior to impact fees being adopted. So, we had to have a matrix to use to fund that and that's, that was the start of it.
Yeah, I hear we are focusing on that, getting some funds put in there. I just didn't know how much is built up and if it's in the planning process, so they are still working forward.
Yes, it is going forward. Stephen and I actually just talked this morning about coming up with the gentleman to purchase the right of way to start that process.
Thank you.
Yes. So, because we pulled this out, I need to go through this final plat application.
Yes.
You ready for the fun? Okay. Description is Legacy Heights number two, final plat application. File number is FP 25-004. Tonight is a city council meeting. The applicant is Kevin Rowley and the representative would still be the same. So, I'm going to read the application summary and then open if there's any questions. The applicant, Kevin Rowley, has requested approval of a final plat application for Legacy Heights number two subdivision. The subdivision includes 14 residential lots and one common lot. The required improvements have been installed and reviewed by city staff. The subdivision is located at the end of Castle Way and southeast of Legacy Heights number one, and this is the final phase for the existing Legacy Heights subdivision. The preliminary plot was approved by city council on July 23rd, 2024. Emmett City Code 10-2-4 outlines the procedures for final plat approval. Subsection F notes that prior to approving or disapproving a plat, at least one public meeting shall be held by the city council. No public hearing is required for final plat applications and no notice was given other than the person of the meeting agenda. Subsection G notes that the council may delay their decision pending submission of additional information or approve, disapprove, or disapprove the final plat application as presented. Staff's recommendation, staff recommends approval of the final plat application for Legacy Heights number two with site specific conditions of approval being part of the And I will read the site specific conditions of approval. One, the petitioner shall supply the city a set of as-built plans on Mylar as well as in digital PDF format. Number two, completed, signed and recorded declaration of covenants, conditions and restrictions of Legacy Heights number two. Final plat must be recorded within one year of written approval unless an extension is requested and granted by the city. The applicant is to follow all recording requirements as outlined in Emmett City Code 10-2-4K. Within 10 days of recording the final plat, new deeds and legal descriptions for all the lots shall be prepared and recorded in the Gem County Recorder's Office. Corrections addressed from the zoning administrator and director of Public Works. Payment of fee approved and, with preliminary plot for 12th Street and Substation intersection improvements. And staff will verify the above items have been completed prior to requesting the city's signatures.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve Legacy Heights number two, final plat application, file number FP 25-004, and to adopt all site specific conditions.
All right. Second. And by the conditions, only the site specific conditions one through eight?
That's correct.
All right, just another second. Motion has been made by Councilor Nebiker to approve the Legacy Heights number two, final plat application, file number FP 25-004, with the condition that they comply with all the site specific conditions for approval, which were set here, one through eight, and the second was made by Councilor Butler. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? No nays, no abstentions? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Oh, you're still here.
I know.
It's tied to your forehead.
You have my report. Are there any questions on my report?
There's none. None in treasure.
I do want to take a poll on who is all going to be here next Tuesday. Can you all make it? Everyone?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Mayor, Council, you have a copy of my report, just a few things to add. We're on a deployment to Wyoming currently, fighting a wildfire there, we might be there up to three weeks. Just participated in Dream Flight, getting some World War II vets and some Korean War vets up in the air in a biplane, so that's why I was late, sorry for that, but it's worth wild cause. We have a field trip tomorrow. We're going to do our Chili Feed Open House. We'll be talking about car seats and smoke detectors, the American Red Cross is teaming up with us and a lot of other local businesses to open up the doors to the fire department and show what, how we can make our community a little bit safer. Then we also have a car seat event on the 27th of this month. We will have an engine up at the 9/11 ceremony this week at 9:00 AM. And we'll be supporting the Emmett School District with a bonfire for their homecoming coming up. And I believe that's all I have. You got a Steve?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Alex Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, it is National Library Card Month and we added several new families already. We expect to add quite a few more through the, through the month. And I'm really excited, we are officially starting our centennial celebration at the library. This is going to be several milestone moments, programs that we're going to have between now and January. And it'll culminate in January when the official documents were signed and city council actually approved for the library to become officially the department in the, for the city. And that happened in 1926. So, it'll be, I think, some very nice moments. We want to reflect on our rich history that we have here in Emmett and bring in a few special speakers and things. January, or excuse me, September 20th will be our very first event and we're actually holding a book signing. It's called Moving Mountains is the title of the book. It's by Marie Osborne and she was actually the very first nurse practitioner here in the state of Idaho. And she herself will be here at the library and signing books along with Dr. Brian Stone, who is since retired, a doctor here in Emmett. They work closely together, even though Marie Osborne practiced a lot in like the Ketchum, Chalice, Haley area. When Dr. Stone went on a medical mission, which he did often, she would then come to Emmett and actually take care of his patients while he was away. So, there's a real Emmett connection and would encourage you guys to come and listen to them speak. It'll be kind of an informal setting, but I think it's going to be pretty interesting. And that'll be on September 20th, 11:30 to 1:00 at the library. And there will be books available as well. We have added one to our collection too, so kind of some fun things going on. It should be kind of a, an educational fall and all about our humble beginnings and where we're at today and where we're headed for our next chapter. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Gunka.
Councilor Mayor, you do have my hard copy report. I dropped it off in front of you. Thank you.
Mayor? Chief, just have a question. Substation 12, are you getting any complaints, concerns or frustrations about traffic out there yet? Is it, I know the school could probably is getting in school, whatever, it's heading to Boise and that's kind of probably a pretty busy intersection. Have you had any accidents or concerns?
So, I don't think anything's changed in the last few years there. It's, yes, it's very hectic and very busy, always has been. Here, I just pulled stats, the last two weeks, we had a number of complaints out there, 13 total. One of them was an ordinance violation, the other one was a suspicious vehicle, and then we had 11 traffic stops. Now, the reason for the traffic stops is because we do know that there is a lot of traffic, especially at the first couple of weeks. And so, I have been putting extra officers out there who have been put onto the grant that we have gotten from the state, from ITD, along with our motorcycle officer has been out during school. So, the majority of those stops are school related and we've been doing a good job where we haven't had crashes. I think it's because the presence of the officers is why I think it's decreased that. There have been some crashes that came up in my mind. Two of them actually happened last year and they both happened during the time that there was construction that caused that road to be the road that had a lot of traffic more because, because they had shut that extension down on 12th Street. And we brought in a four-way stop. So, there was other elements there than just a lot of traffic or increase in traffic that caused those crashes. And there was a crash where a child had gotten hit by the pharmacy also, which was up the road a little bit. But again, yes, there's a school there, there's a lot of traffic there. Today, I did a little experiment, I put an officer out to direct traffic after school and it decreased the amount of time that got people out of there by 10 minutes. So, normally it takes 20 minutes, it took 10 minutes to get the parking lot back to normal.
You make that a regular practice then?
Hmm. It's a good idea, huh? Yeah, it was awesome. It was awesome what we did. And that's just 10 minutes out of the SRO's day and there's an SRO assigned to three schools, one of them being Carberry. So, it was Mr. Armstrong that did that. So, yeah, it was, it was good.
The SROs, do they go out and help traffic areas?
Oh, yes.
The other day I was coming, because I live down Hawthorne, came down Hawthorne to 4th Street, when the school got out at the wrong time. There was kids on scooters in the middle of the roads, cars have to stop, go around them, there was kids walking through people's yards, like no respect for the community around their area. Cars were having to go around, all the different cars waiting for the kids, walking onto sidewalks, crossing roads without even looking. Just, just if you pass on your SRO down there by the middle school, that's quite confusing going to the eastward way, so.
I just read a report just a couple of days ago where Officer Armstrong contacted one of those, or a person on a scooter who was driving unsafely, contacted the parents, advised them of all the laws that they were violating. So, I know that we're making contact with, with those kids.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
Are we going to be citing any of these violations?
We have been citing.
Educational-
We have been citing, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just three more.
Mayor, Council, you have my report. Any questions? As I look at him all.
Any questions?
So, is there any plan in the future to do any kind of dog parks?
I actually was thinking about out at that park, maybe trying to do a, a small dog park up there and then with this land that we're trying to acquire out here by the wastewater treatment plant, by Boise Cascade, that is going to be a dog park area also.
Awesome.
So, yes, we do have plans for it.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, the Lions and Chamber, you have meetings with them about the park? How do those meetings go?
They went great.
Forget it.
Yeah, yeah, we, we talked, the Lions actually, they took some samples to see if maybe we have some bugs also and they sent it, sent it off and I said, hey, awesome, thank you guys for any support we're, we're getting from them. And they were more hap, they were more than happy to help with any of the fertilizing or anything that we have to do there. Same with the Chamber. And we've all kind of been spitballing ideas on how we can, you know, get this park back to being able to come back like it used to. So, and I, I actually did some water testing. Zamsav sent me a water testing kit and I was able to do some water testing out here on the, the park and that's actually getting, it caught, roughly about two inches of water is what you're supposed to be getting a week and we're getting three inches of water on it. And so, which tells me that it is our compaction. I had another company come in and they did a compaction test in the green areas. They were able to hit, go down six to nine inches and hit, it's like 300 PSI of compaction clear down. Before they hit that, it was clear down at six to nine inches. In the dead areas, it was two inches that they were hitting at, that 300 PSI threshold. So, I've been in contact, they, they had some stuff that they suggested. I wasn't too sure, it was a liquid form. I wasn't too sure how that really would go, but I have been in contact with Zamsav's and he's given me some Penneturf and then he has a treatment that they're looking at that, it's a newer treatment they've been doing, it's a one-time a year versus multiple times a year, that I'd like to get more information from him on that, which I'll, I'll do. And then he mentioned, you know, doing some, some human green also and I'll, I kind of want to talk to them about when we put that on because I'd hate to put it on either too early or, or too late, you know, I'm not a lawn guru or whatnot, so yeah. But we, we have all had a good talk.
Good, y'all, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, the Chamber has said that they really appreciate what's been going on, so.
Any other questions? Mayor, Council, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, any questions for me?
Is there a motion to adjourn? Mayor? Yes. Who, who was the second? Huh? Oh, okay. Motion was made by Councilor Butler-